Good afternoon, everyone. It is Monday, October 21st, and this is a regular meeting of the Eugene Planning Commission. The agenda item today is going to be the deliberations and possible action on the appeal of Planning Director's decision for Eugene Broadway Adjustment Review. And everybody situated? We'll go ahead and get started. I know we have a couple of procedural items on the agenda first, and then we'll go ahead and move into staff presentation, and then I'll kind of summarize how we'll likely go through the proceedings.
Thank you, Sarah Edwards. So Florence Emmerich, Assistant City Attorney. We have one procedural issue before the commission dives into substantive deliberations, and that is that at the hearing on this appeal, Bill Aspergyn submitted a request that Commissioner Taylor recuse herself and wanted to give Commissioner Taylor the opportunity to respond to that request.
Great. And I did want to let Planning Commission know that I did follow up with a letter in response via email as well to city staff and Lauren. So Bill Aspergyn Brent Asp- Bergren submitted a letter at the public hearing on this application alleging that I have a conflict of interest because I represented another land use applicant in a separate matter, Ferry Street Manor, which involves some of the same issues, parking requirements, et cetera, that are at play in this appeal. The Planning Director has made a final decision on the Ferry Street Manor application, and the Planning Director's decision was not appealed. Consequently, the Planning Commission will not consider the Ferry Street Manor application, and the Planning Commission's decision on this Broadway Towers Adjustment Review appeal will not affect the Ferry Street Manor application. Because a final decision on that application has already been made, my decision on the Broadway Towers appeals will not create a financial benefit or detriment for me or my employer, TBG Architects and Planners. Because I have neither an actual nor a potential conflict of interest related to this Broadway Towers appeal, I decline to recuse myself, and I will participate fully in this appeal.
Okay. Wonderful. Well, to get started, I'm going to just kind of explain the order that we're going to go through this afternoon. We have 12 items that we're going to go through sequentially. We're going to have a presentation by Dan Halverson, who's going to go through those. And then we'll go through each one by one in order, and we'll be doing straw polls on each of those specific issues. And then with the time that we have today, and we also have more deliberations tomorrow, so the idea there is that we'll be voting on a final order. So staff will be making any kind of changes or amendments, recommendations based on the conversations. And then we will have a -- in your AIS is the draft order there. Again, just a draft. It's just a starting place so that we can kind of have discussions around those items. And then we will be voting on the final order in our second set of deliberations, most likely. So that is how we will proceed, and I'll go ahead and let Dan start a presentation for us.
Thank you, and good afternoon. My name is Dan Halverson. I'm with Planning and Development. Today, we're here to present the Eugene Broadway Apartments' appeal. Just to give you a quick update, since last time you saw this was August 27th, this is the site, and it's on the southeast corner of East Broadway and Hilliard. Currently, there's a restaurant and parking as seen in the picture. The project site is currently surrounded by the Pancake House to the east, Pub Restaurant to the west, and Northwest Christian University to the south. Wanted to remind you of the complexities of the zoning. Here on the screen, I have the lots and their zones. I also handed out a colored copy of those zones for you, so you can follow along while we're moving from issue to issue. Development site consists of seven tax lots. The zoning for the site is primarily C2 or community commercial. One tax lot in the southwest corner is -- tax lot 2400 is zoned R4 or multifamily. Three of the C2 lots have a TD overlay or transit-oriented development, and the tax lot 2400 has SR or site review and a TD overlay. Just a brief, the applicant has proposed an eight-to-12-story high apartment complex with one level of underground parking and one at grade level with parking also. I just want to show you some of the background dates. As I said earlier, the last time you saw this was August 27th at the public hearing, and now, after all the open records are closed, we're in deliberation today and tomorrow, possibly. I want to give you a brief description of an adjustment. They are discretionary and are a process to allow alternative designs. Adjustments are not a variance to the code. With a variance, you'd have to have some sort of hardship where the project cannot meet the code. Not all standards are adjustable, and the code, usually at the end of each section, tells us what is available for an adjustment or not. The applicant could apply for an adjustment, get approval, and then decide they're going to meet the standard, and then not use that adjustment. At building permit phase, the compliance of the applicable standards will occur, including any approved adjustments -- standards. So just wanted to give you a brief up on that. Okay, here's a whole list of all the adjustments that were requested. There were 13 of them. As you said earlier, 12 were appealed. As we can see in the slide, they're broken out into the areas of where they're working. So like, the large commercial facilities has three, the TD-oriented development has one, multifamily standards has three. So we're going to try to keep them in these contexts and go through them one at a time for you. So the first three, as I said, are dealing with the large commercial zone standards. The first of those deals with the onsite pedestrian circulation. Here I have the standard up for you with the two relevant subsections. The project would have to meet these standards so they could build without an adjustment. The one that talks about an eight-foot sidewalk along the building where the entrance is located, and the other is an internal access connection to adjacent sites or alleys. I showed you this site plan at the August meeting, in case you don't remember it, and identified these areas where these adjustments are. The entrance is proposed in the northwest corner, top left of the slide, and the wall along the commercially zoned property would need to be eight feet in width to not have an adjustment. The applicant has proposed six feet and is providing other amenities, one being a gardening strip along Hilliard to separate traffic and pedestrians. The other section in this adjustment is the sidewalk along the southern section, the other red box. The applicant is proposing a three-foot sidewalk adjacent to planters in a 10-foot setback area, which we'll discuss in one of the other adjustments. Yes, sir.
Commissioner Baker?
Yeah. I was curious about the -- I didn't find anything in the record from Public Works Department commenting on the width of the sidewalk on the south. Is that correct?
I can't remember all the Public Works comments, but I don't remember them commenting on the sidewalk.
So it appears that they weren't asked whether that was a suitable dimension for that sidewalk.
And I'll note that that one, that particular sidewalk there and to the right side is not a public sidewalk. That's a private sidewalk, so we typically wouldn't ask Public Works their, you know, feedback on a private walkway as opposed to a public walkway.
Okay.
So again, I showed this at you -- oh, sorry.
Commissioner Fragle.
You want me to go back?
Why don't you go ahead? Is the -- so you're talking about the west edge here on Hilliard, right?
Yes.
So why don't you go ahead and maybe you'll answer my question?
Okay.
Thank you.
No worries. I showed this again at the last meeting. Wanted to give you a visual representation of the proposed sidewalk and amenities. These are the applicant's visual renderings and show the proposed west edge of the building. I do not have one for the south edge where the three-foot sidewalk is proposed. That section is adjacent to the alley, and as the applicant said in their application and rebuttals, will be gated, and only the occupants of the apartments or their coming and goings will be going through there. Did that answer?
Okay, yeah, so now I do have a question. So it's in the code, it says the sidewalk should be located at least six feet from the wall of the building. And this looks like it's five feet from the side of the building when I look at the plan. I was having a hard time reading it, but -- and then on the plan itself, I don't see -- I see the green space next to the building, and then I see the sidewalk, but then I don't see the other green space next to the edge of the road on this plan, and so am I reading?
If you look at the --
Oh, it's turned differently.
Okay.
Yeah, okay, great. So now I am seeing that. So, yeah, what is the space between the building and the sidewalk? It's 2.2 feet?
Yep. That looks like that's correct, yes.
And then a six-foot sidewalk, and then the other planter is next to the road is how much?
I was just looking at this. Hold on. It's -- It looks five feet.
So, okay, so it's two five -- two six five.
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. So now I just wanted to put up the adjustment criteria to adjust these sidewalks. The planning director had to find that the project met one of the five criteria to approve the adjustment. You will have three options to affirm the planning director's decision, to modify the decision, or reverse the decision. To reverse, in this instance, we would need to show that the adjustment does not meet any of the five criteria shown on the screen. At this point, staff's going to let you deliberate on this issue, and we can answer any questions if you have any more.
All right. Commissioner Ramey.
So my question is about the standard which we're using to judge whether these exceptions -- bad word choice there -- are acceptable or not. So, sorry.
It's okay.
So those are the standards, A through E, right?
Yes.
There, as far as I can tell, there's no zero case, there's no comparator. So there was not a building designed that was designed to standard, and that is then compared to the building that is proposed. And so there's no way to -- for us to judge, well, is it better or worse than what would have been designed by code without the adjustment? But that's not required. All that's required is that we say it has improved the appearance of a large commercial facility.
Or one of the other.
Or one of the others.
Other ones, yeah.
But there's no -- so because a lot of the -- much of the testimony doesn't really give you the zero base case. It doesn't say, this is what would happen if we didn't get an adjustment. So there's no way for us to compare the two, but we're not being asked to compare the two. We only have to check one of these boxes, which could be encouraging mixed use.
Correct. Yeah, we don't ask them to give us, they're saying, a zero.
Right.
Case. You can imagine what a large commercial facility would need, I guess, and maybe compare that, but I don't.
So in the absence of there being any testimony about that, it's us imagining, or I guess it was referenced a large box building. So there was some references to some examples, but otherwise
I remember that.
We can judge this is better than a standard commercial building or not. That's all we have to do.
I would say that you need to meet one of these, any of these states.
But all of them are sort of squishy, encouraging efficient use.
Commissioner Ramey, if I may as well, in your draft final order, in your agenda packet, staff did a really good job of outlining the reasons that the planning director found that several of those criteria were met. And so another way to go about it would be to look at what the planning director decided and determine whether you agree with the planning director.
Based on the evidence in the record.
Based on the evidence in the record.
Right? So you accept that decision, and then you say, is there anything in the record that would make me think that was not the right decision? Correct?
Yes, I mean, I don't know that baseline. You have to accept the decision, but I think you do, you take the decision and you compare it to the evidence in the record.
You don't have to accept it, right.
And you decide whether or not you feel that that
Based on the evidence in the record.
Correct. Yep.
Commissioner Baker, and then Commissioner Fragle.
Yeah, I just have a question. Because we're talking about two very distinct, separate areas, it seems to me that these adjustment criteria would need to apply to both. In other words, you'd have to find one of the five for both of the locations separately because they're so different.
It doesn't require two sets of findings. We addressed it in the planning director. Yes, so yes.
So we're just talking about the west side of the building right now, correct?
And so.
Yeah.
You guys can discuss.
Okay, I'm just clarifying.
I'd like
We're talking about the west side of the building right now, right?
You know, it's my understanding, staff, if you don't mind if I can interject, in an adjustment review, this criteria is applying to -- so you're adjusting the width of the
Right, yeah.
Walkway, right?
Right.
And you have to meet that criteria.
Correct.
And it's not necessarily, it can be the comprehensive development.
We just have to meet one of those.
Yes.
And but we're only looking at the west side of the building right now. We're not also discussing the three-foot sidewalk by the parking lot.
So what you can, the way the adjustment review can be looked at, staff, please actually contribute, is that dissecting it isn't necessarily how it needs to be addressed from the criteria perspective. You can actually put it together that they're saying they're adjusting these two sections, this width, and does one or more of the following apply to the development?
I can think of either separately or together. I just was asking for clarification. Because I think I have a similar question to Commissioner Ramey in that, and that's why I asked for those numbers. So if it's a two-foot planter against the building plus the six-foot sidewalk, plus the five-foot planter next to the street, that's 11 feet, right? That's 11 feet from the building until, into the road, until the road. But if it's six feet from the building to the sidewalk, and then another eight feet of sidewalk, that's 14 feet from the building to the road. And so I'm trying to wrap my mind around the same question, like, what would this building look like if we didn't give them the adjustments? So what is the impact to the developer if we don't give these adjustments? Because, and I understand that, like, I certainly think we're encouraging mixed use here, we're supporting, you know, transportation options. I mean, we're also looking at fairly ambiguous, not clear and objective standards here, which, right, we don't usually have in adjustment reviews, but I'm trying to balance out, does the project actually really need the adjustment?
If I may?
Yeah.
I just, I think that it would be helpful, and maybe staff, if you guys can just kind of clarify, to help keep us on track as far as what are the breadth of our, you know, what's before us. Basically, the question at hand is, does it meet at least one of those things? I don't know that the Planning Commission has the authority to interject a subjective type of -- how do I say this? That's the question that we have to answer.
Okay.
Not whether or not we might find that that's a, seems like a really narrow sidewalk to me, but if it's meeting, you know, again, it's not a public sidewalk, so it's on private property. So again, we have to focus on kind of, that's the question at hand, is, in the opinion of commissioners, is there at least one of those that this adjustment review would satisfy? And that's pretty much -- Commissioner Taylor?
Yeah, we don't really get to decide if there would be a better design. What's in front of us right now is there are these two adjusted proposals or adjustment review requests. This is the criteria. Does it meet it, or does it not? Did the planning director make a correct decision? Do we agree with it, or do we not? So I'm just going to, I agree with the planning director's decision on this item, so I'll just, and I appreciated the additional testimony that was submitted during the open record period, just in terms of providing information in the record in terms of width. So obviously, three foot is your ADA minimum required width. So, and so that, I guess, would be my bigger concern, is can, is the sidewalk actually approvable in terms of other required code sections, which check? We've got that information in front of us, so, yeah.
Commissioner Barofsky, and then Commissioner Baker.
So for me, again, I think that at least one of those has been checked. I don't need to go through and say which one I believe is checked, but I think those are checked. The question that I have as far as affirming, denying, or affirming with conditions, modifying, the one question that I had regarding that is, is that the developer proposed on the sidewalk on East Broadway that part of the public sidewalk would be on private property. Would it be possible to require them to cede that property to the city? Because normally sidewalks are publicly owned, and they're saying that part of that six-foot sidewalk was going to be on their property. And I'm just wondering how that goes with property rights and those types of things, if that could be a condition of approval.
I want to point out that they didn't request any adjustment to that particular sidewalk, so
Which sidewalk was it that they were talking about with that part of it was going to be on their property? I remember that.
I think, I do think, right, I think you are talking about the sidewalk on East Broadway, so along the northern side. So that is not subject to any of the adjustment reviews, and that's something that will be looked at at the time of building permit. So I don't, I can't see any way that we could attach a condition to that.
Okay. But didn't that have? So that's not being proposed for an adjustment review? Any of the sidewalk on that?
Correct.
North side?
Correct.
All right. Thank you.
Okay. Commissioner Baker?
Yeah, if you go back to the, that's, no, the one you just had.
Okay.
Yeah, it, you can, it appears to me that you can only judge those, those criteria relevant to the original standard. In other words, it's not a generic assumption that a building without, would improve the appearance or whatever. It's relative to the, what would have been required by code, that one of these has to be better than would have been, would have been required by code, appears to me, to meet the criteria. Otherwise, it's just a generic criteria which has no relationship to anything to make the comparison. I mean, it may not be, I mean, so this would follow along with Commissioner Fragle, that from my point of view, one of these has to be better than what the code would have required. Has to be met from, to meet the adjustment criteria.
So I will, again, I travel, I've seen the site plans, we've all seen the site plans, I'm sure everybody has driven those roads. To me, the design with the buffered between the sidewalk and the having planning, planning things between the sidewalk and the street definitely improves that section. I've walked that section, I've biked that section. It's not conducive to me, and I think that this design makes it conducive. Would it make it as conducive as the, as the code? I'm not sure, but I think it, I can get there with the encouraging efficient use of land. That's one of the things that we are trying to do in this, in our city. I do have, you know, pause with a three-foot sidewalk. That's just me, but I don't think that, as Commissioner Taylor said, you know, it meets ADA codes, it's a private sidewalk, blah, blah, blah. I would, I tried walking the sidewalk this morning and looked at three feet and thought, gosh, three feet's small, but again, it meets the, meets the standard, so I can move forward with approving this adjustment review.
Commissioner Baker?
Yeah, I have some question about that. I mean, there are various ADA standards, and the city's ADA standard would require four feet, and so would the bicycle. If you, if you talk to Public Works, that's why I was concerned about comments. If we talked to Public Works, they would tell you that the minimum sidewalk for bicycles is four feet, and it also meets ADA. So, you know, you can find some document in here, and somewhere, there is some place where at some point it cites three feet, but that's not the generally accepted standard for ADA. ADA is four feet.
Go ahead, Lauren.
Just as a point of clarification, and I'll look to Dan and Alyssa to jump in if I start to go sideways, but I think it might be helpful, again, to kind of take a quick step back and talk about what, what an adjustment request is. So without an adjustment request, an applicant would be required to comply with the standards in the code, right? That's all there is to it. And in this case, most of those standards would come up for the applicant at building permit. Wouldn't be a land use decision in the first place. But our code, the drafters of our code at some point decided that there are types of standards that we think should be adjustable, that the applicant should be able to kind of take a step away from complying with the minimum standard. And as Dan pointed out, not necessarily for hardship reasons, not because they can't comply with the minimum standard, but because they are proposing a design that the drafters of our code think is valuable, even though it doesn't kind of comply with those cookie-cutter code standards. The drafters of our code said, okay, so these, you know, however many standards are adjustable, if an applicant wants to address them, they have to apply to do that. And they have to show that the design that they're proposing, instead of what would be required under the code, brings some benefits. And here, for this particular adjustment, here are the types of benefits that we're looking for out of this alternative design. And so what the city decision-maker then does And so what the city decision maker then does is look at the alternative design, say, yeah, you're right, it doesn't comply with the minimum code standards, but we have a process specifically allowing for that. And does the design that's been submitted meet, in this case, one or more of these sort of additional benefit that the drafters have decided is important to us in designing projects? So what Planning Commission is being asked to do today is look at the planning director's decision, where in this case, planning director said, yeah, actually, I think it meets four of these criteria. Look at the evidence in the record, as Commissioner Ramey pointed out, and then decide if you think that the planning director got it right. And you may, because of the nature of this particular application, you got new evidence that the planning director didn't have, so there may be something in the record that you're looking at, planning director didn't see, that might cause you to come to a different conclusion. Or, you know, something that the planning director did see that you just see differently that causes you to come to a different conclusion. But it's not a question of whether the design meets the minimum standard, it's not a question of whether even, I mean, I, I appreciate the reference to ADA standards, but that's not one of the criteria that we're looking at here either. Frankly, we're just looking at the criteria that are up on the screen. And so that's all you've got. And then there, there may be some other things that come up during building permit, during, you know, there are other kind of decisions associated with this application. You are not the only decision maker, you are not the only sets of eyes looking at this application, applying code standards. And, I will say too, as Dan pointed out, you know, there, the applicant could get the adjustment, get the adjustment approval, and at some point decide, I actually don't want to do that anymore. And then they would be held to the minimum code standard, again. So it's a, it's an intentionally flexible process, it's an intentionally discretionary process, that's allowed. It's different than a lot of the applications you've been seeing recently, which have been needed housing, clear and objective criteria. So this is a little bit more flexible and discretionary. And so your job, again, here is just to look at the evidence in the record, look at these criteria, and decide whether you think they are met.
Commissioner Taylor.
So, thank you, Lauren, that was very clear. So, and, so one of the, in line with that, is if you look at the various criteria up there, in terms of if these areas, the four that were identified by the planning director was A, B, C, and D, which I think there is great argument, and obviously in the open record period, additional arguments and added detail, that I think cover some of, one of my concerns, that obviously ADA isn't even in front of us, it's just, is that an effective walkway? Kelly Sando actually addresses that, looks at what that circulation pattern is. But these really are the items, and I do believe that, as Lauren said, even though, for instance, three feet, it is narrower than the eight feet, obviously the landscape strip, well, it's actually greater, it's seven feet there.
Yeah, it's greater.
So it is not a main customer entrance, it's a side entrance, it looks even like an egress entrance, but what it's doing is an encouraging efficient use of land resources and like, and urban services. And, so, just to address that one in particular, the other thing I wanted, staff, if you could clarify, it's my understanding, in an adjustment review, really, it's very particular to these items that are being adjusted. So if the applicant decides to not take advantage of these adjustments and meet the code, that's an option, but they can't reallocate these adjustments to some other walkway. It's very particular to these items that are being requested.
That is correct. I mean, they, they couldn't decide that, oh, we'll do the three feet over here instead, and then also, they're not locked in, if this is to be approved, they're not locked into it. They can go, come back in, as Lauren said, and come back in with the design that could meet the code, if that, they so chose.
Okay. Are we ready to straw, oh.
So I, I just wanted to say that that clarification about the reason behind the adjustment was really helpful to me, that I'm hearing you say that, in order to improve the design, they're asking for flexibility initially, right? And so, I mean, I, I would like to see more space between the building and, and the street, honestly. I think that this, these are very high-traveled areas, and, and other places, we've seen building setbacks that are right on, very close to the street, and I don't think they're attractive, but I, I can see in the effort of the developer that they wanted to improve the appearance of the building. And I, I do think the design of putting the green space between, like, on both sides of the sidewalk does improve the design of the building, so I, I appreciated the explanation, and I can see how the adjustment criteria, the adjustment does meet several of these criteria. Lauren?
If I may, I just one more thing.
Yeah.
This is, so, this is outside of the scope of this particular decision before you, but you've been in similar circumstances in the past, where you may have, this decision kind of may bring to light some questions for you about whether the standards that the code currently allows to be adjustable are ones that you would like to continue to see be adjusted, you know, maybe those aren't the right standards. And/or are the adjustment criteria the right criteria? You may find that you don't particularly like them. For this decision, you are bound by the code as, as it is written, but, you know, you, this may spark a conversation for you later about whether you think you want to, you know, weigh in on adjustments generally, and whether the code is written the way you would like to see it written. So just kind of teasing those two things apart. And I think Commissioner Fragile, you just did a great job of that. But that, you know, today, we have the code in front of us, we have the criteria in front of us, but going through this process, you may realize that you aren't a super fan of some of the things that are currently allowed to be adjusted, or the criteria that folks have to meet to gain one of those adjustments. And we can discuss that at, at a different time.
Mr. Baker, is your hand up?
Yes, I was just, wanted to comment that, from my perspective, the south side, those criteria, I, I don't see those criteria or adjustments being applicable to the south side. I don't consider it encourages mixed use, it certainly doesn't support the transportation options, it's a very narrow sidewalk. The issue about efficient use of land, we're talking about a one-foot strip, it's not, we're not talking about efficiency in land, and it certainly doesn't improve the appearance having a three-foot versus a four-foot sidewalk. So I think the criteria are very different for the south side adjustment than they are for this hillyard-street adjustment, from my point of view, in terms of meeting criteria.
And the thing I had wanted to add was, I actually went over and walked around the site on Saturday, am I not allowed to do that? I'm sorry.
We generally do.
Okay.
You did.
Do I, okay, so, I, if, I don't know, I, I don't spend time in that part of the city, so I, I, I needed to see what it looked like, right? Do I need to recuse myself now? Okay. All right, sorry, I'm a very visual person, and anyway, I apologize, but I, I actually think this design is going to improve what's there, to be honest with you. And so I, I do think that it, it meets the criterion.
Okay, I've got Commissioner Ramey, and then Commissioner Taylor.
Well, that's where, that's where I am, it, it checks several of the boxes that we need to check, and I believe it does, in fact, improve the use of the land, which is one of the boxes, and it does promote transportation options, because it allows, by way of a private access, which is gated, so people are dismounting from their bicycles, another way to get into the building, which is safe and convenient for those people who want to use that for their bikes. So I would say it does promote alternative forms of transportation.
Yeah, I was just gonna, yeah, I was just gonna repeat the same thing that Commissioner Ramey said, is, I, I think it's, in terms of those criteria, it definitely hits four, and I'd even say E as well, is, it, what a phenomenal development at this kind of corner gateway into kind of the university area, as well as downtown.
All right. Are we ready to straw poll on this issue? So then, the question, and I will just ask, like, if there are, if there are comments that you all want to make, it'd be helpful if you had a very, if you didn't believe that the, that the planning director, if you believe that the, the planning director erred, that if, you know, you could maybe articulate clearly, you know, where and how, not that that's applicable right here, but I would go ahead and get a straw poll on whether the commission agrees that the, to affirm the planning director's decision that the applicant met the approval criteria for EC 9.8030 subsection 6. All right, so all those, one, two, three, four, five, and opposed? Commissioner Baker.
And just a comment, I, I believe it met the criteria on the east side. I didn't think it met the criteria on, on the south side. It's going to be gated in either case, whether it's a three-foot or four-foot sidewalk, I think that has no relation to the, whether it improves transportation options.
Okay.
The width of the sidewalk is what improves the transportation options.
All right, perfect. All right, should we go on to the next? Dan, it's all you.
So now we're still looking at the commercial zone standards. Remember, the first three are going to be dealing with those same criteria. Number two today is for exterior wall articulation. Here are the standards that would have to be met with no adjustments. The ground floor on the west side of the building, as proposed, would need an adjustment because, well, it's just about 90 feet, it's a little over, it's almost 100, it's, I was scaling it out, and it looked like it was 99.9, something like that. So it's about 100, and it, it doesn't have the articulation that we're looking for, so the applicant applied for, and here you can see, I, once again, I showing you these from the previous meeting, has a glass wall that goes straight down the side until it hits the R4 lot, which is farther down, and then that's offset, but this wall here doesn't have the required articulation, so they asked for the adjustment. Once again, these are going to look really familiar, these are the same adjustments that you saw just a minute ago, on the next one, it's going to be the same adjustments also, so the planning director made that finding, that it met one or more of these. Once again, I'll remind you, you have three options to affirm, to modify, or reverse the decision. I'll let you discuss this one now.
Any comments? Mr. Taylor.
Can I just get a clarification, because of how you just stated that, I just want to clarify, that it's really the ground floor facades on the portion proposed, on the proposed building that will be located in the C2, that don't provide the required articulation? It's very specific to that, right?
It's, it's, and that's when, in the planning director's decision, too.
Right, I just want, you just stated it in a slightly different way, that's why...
Did I? I'm sorry.
That's all right. You just said it didn't meet the articulation for the building, so I just want to make sure, it's very specific to just that.
Yes.
Perfect.
All right. Any other comments or discussion? All right, go ahead and vote for the straw poll, then. Those who will vote to affirm the planning director's decision that the applicant met the approval criteria for EC 9.80306, oh, are we on the same one? Okay.
For the next three, you'll see this one.
Okay, all right, with regards, I apologize, with regards to exterior wall articulation. All those in favor? Okay. All right, let's go to the third one.
Okay, on to number three, last one of the commercial zone standards, so this one deals with the interior side yard setback. Here's the relevant standard, one you would have to follow if a building was a large commercial structure adjacent, adjacent to a residential zone. Again, here's the site plan that I showed you at the, at the PC meeting. Red box shows the C2 zone portion that abuts the residential property to the south. I'm going to give you a close-up. The applicant asked for an adjustment to allow a 10-foot setback, instead of the 30-foot required commercial setback. In case you're wondering, the plans show a seven-foot planter strip in here, and a three-foot sidewalk that we discussed earlier, all within that 10-foot setback. So again, here's these criteria, I will let you discuss.
All right. Anyone have any comments or discussion? Mr. Baker.
Yeah, I'm, I'm less comfortable with this width adjustment, because right now, I believe there's, what, an empty lot next to it? But that may, may not be the case in the future, and it may not be, this is quite a tall building, and just for the record, we have buildings that are only four feet, fours high, that meet the maximum density requirement in this zone. So buildings don't have to be this high to meet the maximum density requirement. And so the reason that that separation is there, so, was so that there could be, you know, some separation between a taller building and potentially a smaller building, or even some outdoor space on the adjacent property. And also, I'm, I'm comfortable with this, because then, then based on this, we, later on, we adjust the landscape standards, so they don't even have to meet the landscape standards for the separation. So I'm uncomfortable with the dimension here. I would feel more comfortable if it was more like 15 or 20 feet, but not 10 feet, because then you could still have a reasonable sidewalk, four-foot sidewalk, and you could still have the reasonable width to do your, do the plant, planting that's required. So I'm not comfortable with this dimension. I feel it's reasonable to expect to adjust it, but I don't, I feel some dimension in between 30 and 10 would be a better choice, 15 feet or 20 feet.
Lauren, can I ask a clarifying question? That particular adjustment criteria was not appealed, is that correct, with the parking landscape? Is that, or...
There's, there are three that, three parking landscaping adjustments, there are at least two others that affect this area, and they were appealed? I think those are nine and 10, yeah, so we will, there was another one up in the northeast corner that was not appealed.
Oh, okay, okay. Thank you. All right, Commissioner Borowski.
Yeah, this one was a little, kind of like Commissioner Baker said, this one was a little bit harder for me to get to, at least, you know, the first ones, I could go through, one through four, pretty easily. This one, you know, A, I have a hard time with it, B is, is probably the one that I can get there with, you know? The other ones, it, I, I don't see them there, but it only takes one, and I think I can get there with efficient use of land. Again, as a layman, and not, not, you know, trying to rewrite everybody's plans, I think there, that this is tight, considering what could be developed next door, seeing as how it's not a already developed property. Chances are, it will get developed at some point, just because of the need for flat ground, it's not got something on it, and chances are, it's going to get developed. So that, you know, again, I'm not talking to the criteria or anything here, this is just me talking about how I feel about it. I, I would say that that's a pretty tight, tight setback. And I don't know if there's a way for us to get, like Commissioner Baker said, to a larger setback, but the only way that I could get to approving it would be with subsection B, that's the only way on this one I can get there.
Okay. Any other comments? Any other comments? Commissioner Fragla? Okay, and then Commissioner Ramey. Commissioner Ramey, you want to go first?
Sure. So I'm firmly on B here as well. I believe that 10 feet is narrow, but the original intention behind this was to separate commercial property from residential property, and now effectively we're residential to residential. So within that 10 feet, I believe a three-foot sidewalk is sufficient, and the planting that's left over is sufficient as well, so I don't see any reason, in fact, there's nothing in the record that would allow me to come to any other conclusion. So I'm okay with the 10-foot adjustment.
Now Commissioner Fragla.
Yeah, so the question that I did have was around, so this is, the lot there is a, it's a residential lot next to a residential lot, right? And so it's a commercial next to residential, right, that's what I thought. So it's a commercial next to a residential. And so if it were a residential next to a residential, how would it be different?
It wouldn't, the setback wouldn't apply if it were not a large commercial facility. So if it was two multifamily, you know, a multifamily lot next to a multifamily, an R4 lot zone next to an R4 lot, the standard doesn't exist. They have a five-foot setback.
Right.
And R4 has the same height limit that C2 has, they both can go up to 120 feet.
Okay. All right. Somehow knew that Commissioner Ramey was going to answer my question.
All right, oh, Commissioner Barofsky.
So again, I guess I'm unclear about the ability of the Planning Commission to modify. Can you talk to me about that? If this was a condition that we, as a Commission, decided 10-foot wasn't the right width, can we modify that? Or is it, we, it's either yes, he hit all of these, or it hit one of these, and then we can't modify it? Or just please tell me about how this Commission can go about modifying this Planning Director's decision.
Sure, it's a good question. So in order to impose a condition of approval, you would need to find that that condition of approval is necessary to meet an approval criterion. And most of the time, you have an approval criterion that says you have to do X, and you have a record that shows you that maybe they, the applicant, didn't quite get to X, but if you add a little condition, you can get them to X. That, the analysis is the same here, except that they can meet any one of these five. So if you find that the design meets one of the five, even if you think it doesn't meet the other four, they've met the criterion, because the criterion only requires them to meet one of the five. In order to impose a condition of approval, you would have to find that they don't meet any of those five subsections, but that somehow the condition would get them to meet one of those five subsections. So it would be, we would need pretty specific, detailed findings about, you know, how it doesn't in the first place, and then why the condition that you're proposing gets them to encouraging efficient use of land resources and urban services, or whatever, whichever subsection you're looking toward. Does that make sense?
Yeah, so if, and again, I'm just throwing this out here for the Commission. So if I felt, you know, I mean, on this one, the only one that I could really silo it into was B, and if I felt that I couldn't get it into that silo and said, if we moved it to a 15-foot setback, I can get to A like that, that would be the way to do it. And I can say, for me, none of these, none of these criteria fit this one. But if we went from the 10-foot to the 15-foot, and again, I'm not drawing plans here in the Planning Commission, I'm just trying to figure out the process here. And then I said, if they did that, I believe it would improve the appearance and function of the property.
Generally, yes, I would say a couple of things in addition. So one is, you know, these adjustment criteria don't come with a sort of minimum acceptable interior yard setback that we know would, would meet the adjustment criteria. So you can't just say, oh, you know, like some of the other criterion, let me back up. So say they were just trying to meet the code criterion, the 30-foot setback, you know, you, they, and they were proposing a 28-foot, and you said, well, but I think we can get you to 30 in this way, and so we're going to condition it that way. That makes sense. Here, you don't have that sort of minimum thing to fall back on, so you would need to be able to make thorough, defensible findings that 10 doesn't get you there, but 15 does, and why? You know, why is that? And I also think that the nature of adjustment review is such that it is intended to be flexible, it is intended to allow an applicant to step away from those minimum code requirements, as long as they can explain why the alternate design they're proposing, you know, provide some of these benefit, or at least one of these benefits for the city. So theoretically, yes, I think you could condition an adjustment review approval. I think it is, you just have to be able to really explain why it's being conditioned in the first place, why it doesn't meet any of the criterion, criteria, rather, and then why the number that feels good for you does.
And again, I'm just, this is the first time I've had this type of, of an appeal, and so I'm trying to learn it as we go. And so some of these questions may be applicable to whether or not I vote yes or no, and some of them may be just so that I have this knowledge base going forward.
I guess the other piece, Commissioner Barofsky, I apologize, is that, you know, obviously, the Commission would have to agree.
Yes, exactly, exactly.
Commissioner Taylor.
Yeah, in response to Commissioner Barofsky's, I don't, in the material, I don't think that I could come up with defensible findings. It seems somewhat arbitrary, so I would have a hard time coming up with any kind of alternate number.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I was just asking, how do, how would we adjust?
Right.
That's one of our three options.
Commissioner Baker.
I just would state that I think you could come up with reasonable findings to justify slightly wider, because that way you would not have to adjust the landscape standards, and it would allow, you know, potentially a wider sidewalk in there. There's a number of reasons why it seems to me that that would clearly improve the appearance and function and support transportation options, whereas the current proposal, I don't think, meets any of the criteria.
I guess I would ask if you had a specific recommendation. I mean, if the, we can straw poll, but.
I would propose that we modify the adjustment to 15 feet. And say, by adjusting to 15 feet, we now feel that that would allow the criteria to be met by A and D. And you could even say E.
All right, maybe I'll straw poll and see if that makes sense. I don't know, I mean, I kind of agree, Commissioner Taylor, that that's, you're just kind of throwing out, I mean, this is my personal opinion, but I think why you could justify 15 and not 10, I don't know that I would be able to substantiate that. And so I think that that's what's being asked of us, is to be able to substantiate that.
I think it's partly because it's related to ones, one that will come up later, where we're trying to adjust the landscaping that would work fine in a 10-foot planting area, but doesn't work well.
Okay.
And they're proposing a change to that landscape, that's a later.
I'm going to let Lauren respond, and then Commissioner Taylor.
So Commissioner Baker, I would be, I, an adjustment review is something that is available to an applicant, that they can choose to take advantage of or not. So denying or modifying one requested adjustment on the basis that they would not then need another requested adjustment, I don't think that will, is a sufficient basis to deny an adjustment, because.
That wasn't my purpose. My purpose was just showing that by changing this, we meet these criteria, and also then, when we come to another later criteria, there's, there's some other considerations that could be placed.
Okay, Commissioner Taylor. All right, what I'll do is, I'm going to go ahead and straw poll just the affirmation of the Planning Commissioners, or the Planning Director's decision, and if we can't get there, then maybe we can have further discussion on how we might make that amendment. So all those who can vote to straw poll, affirm the Planning Director's decision that the applicant met the approval criteria, which is one of these five things, with regards to interior yard setbacks. Opposed? Commissioner Baker. All right, are we ready to go to the next one? Adjustment request number four.
Number four, okay. Now we're switching to the TD overlay, transient oriented development overlay. This adjustment is related to the building orientation of the C2 lot. Here are the relevant standards, I'm sorry, the C2 lots that have the TD overlay and the R4 one. So once again, you'll see at the bottom of the map, I highlighted those lots that have the TD overlay, and you have your little colored handout, you can look at them. The ones at the north side there, those three, they do not have the TD overlay. So to meet this standard without adjustment, you would need to put an entrance within the 15-foot maximum street setback on a TD overlay lot. So the applicant is proposing their main entry on the corner, situated towards Hilliard, but on the lot without a TD overlay. So they asked for an adjustment to that standard. Now you get to see some new criteria. Here's the criteria for the adjustment. The adjustment, the Planning Director had to find consistency with all the criteria in the design to approve this adjustment. So again, you have three options to affirm, modify, or reverse the decision, and I'll let you deliberate.
Any discussion, comments? None? All right, I'll go ahead and do a straw poll then. Those who would vote to affirm the Planning Director's decision that the applicant met the approval criteria of the TD transient oriented development overlay development standards, for building orientation, sorry. All right? Those opposed? Commissioner Baker? Okay. It's unanimous then. Is that correct?
Oh, it's unanimous?
Yes.
Oh.
Well, okay, I asked, okay, Commissioner Baker, can you clarify?
What?
Your vote, are you, were you affirming, or did you oppose?
I was affirming.
Okay, now we're on number five. So number five, six, and seven are the multifamily standards. These three will be all for tax lot 2400, that one in the corner. So you can see the blue box on there, and you can also look on your colored sheet that I gave you. Appeal issue number five is for the building orientation. The standard here requires multifamily buildings located within 40 feet of the front lot line to be primarily oriented towards the street. Though the portion of the building that is on the R4 lot is within the 40 feet of the front lot line and oriented towards the street, it does not contain an entrance. The main entrance, as we heard before, is on the C2 section in the far corner, northwest Here's the adjustment criterion. To adjust this orientation standing, standard, the Planning Director had to find consistency with one of the two criteria to approve the adjustment. Once again, I'll let you guys discuss.
Commissioner Barofsky.
So on three, so it's got to, it's got to meet all three of these criteria, or just one?
It has to meet A or B, and then if you meet B, you have to meet all of the following.
And the Planning Director fell on A, is that what happened?
No, on B.
B, so B, B3 provides socialization. So by, so what you're saying is that the, by going, having the entrance further away on the corner there, that promotes socialization, was what the Planning Director's argument was?
Yes.
I think it also says in there, there's benches and other amenities in that area.
It does talk about, the Planning Director's decision does talk about it, you know, with a single entrance location will provide additional opportunities for socialization, including creating a hub for activity. So there'll be a lot of things that will be accessed through that one location.
Okay. Okay, are we ready to straw poll? Anybody else have any comments or discussion? Okay, let's go ahead and.
Can I ask one?
Absolutely.
It's not super relevant, but I just like to understand what I'm looking at. In the summary of the palant's argument, and I tried to look back, they actually talk about two access that open directly from the main level to 2500. I only saw one, so I got a little confused, like, was there something added, or am I just not seeing something? I only see one entry. Looks like an egress entry, obviously, you know, tenants can enter there. I mean, I agree with the Planning Director's decision, I just wanted to clarify.
I couldn't find the other.
Okay. Perfect, thanks.
All right, so all of those in favor of affirming the Planning Director's decision that the applicant met the approval criteria for the, wait a minute, I'm sorry, for building orientation and interest standards? Okay.
Okay. Again, this is for the R4 zone lot, and this deals with the articulation of this section of the building. Here are the relevant standards. This is for the articulation of the multifamily portion of the building. The standards require horizontal and vertical articulation. I wanted to show you this slide from the Planning Commission meeting that we had up there. We can see the R4 zone section of the building, it is set lower than the main building, four stories lower than the 12 stories. And as we can see, different colors and materials, as well as different window sizes. The adjustment here is because they didn't have, like, the similar articulation they have on the main section of the building where it sets back in. But so they asked for an adjustment. In this one, the Planning Director had to find consistency with both the criteria up on the slide for you. I'll let you discuss.
Okay, any discussion? I did have a question about, obviously, under the articulation requirement, it says that the building shall incorporate designs features such as, and it names a bunch of different things, and it is, there are windows as an element. So what I found slightly confusing was that they didn't say, well, I mean, they do say So windows or entries such and such and such and such didn't seem like relevant, because windows are actually.
There's.
Does that make sense?
Subsections.
Oh, but being specifically, okay, then that's helpful. Okay, that answers my question. Okay, so any other comments or questions? Okay, so, any other comments or questions? Well, I will ask, then, for a vote on straw poll to affirm the planning director's decision that the applicant met the approval criteria for building articulation. Okay, open space, no, yes, number seven. Is that where we are? Okay.
Okay, number seven. This is the third of the multifamily issues and deals with the open space. Here's the relevant standards, and this is in the front yard area of the R4 tax lot. The important section here is subsection C on the screen. The minimum dimension should be 15 by 15 feet to construct without an adjustment.
Commissioner Baker.
Question for staff. My understanding is the minimum setback for R4 is 10 feet?
For a building?
Yeah.
Correct.
So, the, out, the open space in the front is required because of the minimum setback?
The 15 by 15 is just that?
No, but the open space that's provided there, the 10-foot by 50 feet is required by code.
Yes.
Okay. And I was.
It's a building setback, yeah, that's correct.
Right, yeah. And I was involved in the development of these standards for open space, and the reason that we had this criteria was that, to make sure that you couldn't just count the front setback as your open space, you had to make some improvement beyond that to get it to be counted towards open space. And that improvement was having a larger dimension than the 10-foot minimum. Not for the entire area, but there had to be a 15 by 15-foot square, then it could be attached to a longer section of narrower part, but you had to have, and that's why this code requirement was there. So, from my point of view, the 500 square feet that keeps getting cited is not extra open space, it's required by code. It was required by code for them to apply.
Commissioner Brofsky.
So, I think this is the spot where I have my questions regarding some material that was provided in the second open period, first and second open period, regarding the applicability of the open space requirements to all C2 because of the uses and the fact that Bill Aspergyn's testimony that said that there was an appeal that said parking and other amenities that we're talking about in the past appeal that, for socializations and stuff like that, could be considered residential uses. And so, can you just talk about that, that letter and that appeal and whether we need to apply the open state space to all of the C2? Would this be the right appeal issue to bring that up, Hunter?
So, the appeal that was referenced in there is actually, you'll remember it as Lombard, and it's related to residential density and how to calculate density, not how to calculate open space in the context of the multifamily standards. So, we don't think that it's directly applicable to this because it's dealing with completely different code section that has completely different terms within it and is really about density as opposed to open space.
But the, again, and the, when I went through and read through it, it did, it did talk to the terminology of residential use in the affirmed appeal from Luba. So, I guess I need to, I need to know what, because to me, that if, if they're claiming that, that the whole first floor is going to be non-residential use, then the standards don't apply, is the way that I read it, and that's how, the open space standards don't apply to the C2 ones.
So, I have to admit, I'm not as familiar with the record materials, so I'm not sure exactly what the argument that is being made to you is, but I agree with Alyssa that the Court of Appeals decision in the Lombard Apartments' appeal is specific to our code criteria for calculating density of a residential, needed housing residential development. And they do, I mean, it may be that both criteria use the words residential and development, but the density calculation code sections includes its own definitions, it talks about, you know, how, which kind of uses on the property we look at to calculate density. I would agree that there's no correlation. It, I'm sorry, or that, rather, let me rephrase that. I would agree that the Court of Appeals' decision on the Lombard appeal and our density calculation standards does not bind the planning commission in terms of this appeal of adjustment review criteria.
And the other thing I want to point out is their only requested adjustment is related to a dimensional requirement, not the total amount of open space or anything like that. It's a dimensional requirement in this specific corner.
So, how the open space is structured?
Yeah.
A long rectangle instead of a square, but they're offering at least the amount, total amount of required open space, right?
In, in the part of the property that's subject to the multifamily standards, I think the argument that you're referring to is whether or not the multifamily standard should apply to the rest of the site.
Exactly. And so, where, I mean, that was brought up, is there a place in our looking at these adjustments that that would come into play? And it seems to me that this is one of the places.
Right. Well, I mean, so, again, they're, these are voluntary, these are discretionary, and all that they have requested related to multifamily open space is whether or not they can have this dimension instead of the dimension that would be required if they applied the code exactly as written. I don't, I don't think, and I'll let Lauren jump in here, and I think we put this elsewhere, that the applicability of the multifamily standards isn't really an issue here. Whether or not it applies to the C2 zone site isn't really something that, there's a way to get to through this.
I agree. I also think that our code says that the multifamily standards apply to properties owned multifamily, and this is an odd site because you have a bunch of different lots that are zoned separately, but the, until a higher authority tells us that our multifamily standards should apply to the entire site, our code says they apply to the properties owned R4. And there are pieces of the site that are not zoned R4, so they wouldn't apply.
So, I'm just trying to wrap my, so, the, in the record where it was brought up that there's something in the code that says if a property has multifamily and commercial on the same, a development site has multifamily and commercial on the same thing, the multifamily applies to commercial unless there is, first floor is all non-residential. That doesn't apply to this?
That does apply to this particular, I mean, it will at the time of building permit. So, again, that's, so what we're looking at is, in part of this adjustment, just that little corner, not the rest of the standards, and that is something that would actually get applied at the time of building permit, so what?
And who makes that decision, then?
Well, because it's a clear and objective code, it would be the staff reviewing the building permit.
We're talking about EC 9.550, right? Number, number 2A.
Well, I would recommend that we focus on the appeal issue, and if there are other issues to, people want to bring up at the end, whether or not they're related to this, that we kind of separate those from this particular issue, that would be my recommendation.
I would agree, and Commissioner Taylor, you.
Yeah, I just wanted to mention, I mean, really, our scope of review is that, is that blue box, right? I mean, it's just the dimensional requirements of where it's not 15 by 15, so that's really the limit of our review right now.
Good, go ahead.
Can you put up the?
Adjustment?
Yeah, what, what they, the boxes we have to check.
It's an all of the following, which I guess.
All of the following.
Yeah.
Commissioner Baker.
Yeah, again, I want to point out that the area that's in front of this R4 is required by code for the front, front setback, so it's not extra open space, it's the 10-foot by 50 feet, is required. And this open space requirement was specifically put there to make certain that you had to do something more than count the front open space towards your open, front area as your open space requirements. There had to be a 15 by 15-foot square somewhere in this area. Part of it could be narrow, but some of it had to be at least 15 by 15. So, it wasn't a very restrictive requirement, but it required you to do something beyond what the code would require for the front setback.
Commissioner Taylor.
Actually, I would say that's not really in front of us right now. Once again, an applicant is allowed to apply for an adjustment review, it is allowed by code. What's in front of us is not the intent of how the code was actually decided when it was decided, it's just, does it meet this criteria or not?
Did anybody else have any? Okay.
Commissioner Taylor, and clarify that this criteria is adjustable, and so, that implies that they, an applicant could provide a design that is different than a 15 by 15-foot square. And so, the question, then, for the planning commission is, does the design that the applicant is proposing comply with all of the, the adjustment criteria up there?
All right. There's no more discussion on this item. I will go ahead and call for a straw poll. Those who can affirm the planning director's decision that the applicant met the approval criteria for the multifamily standards adjustment for open space. One, two, three, four. All right, opposed?
And, and I'll just speak, I'm, I may not be opposed, I just need more study on this, and so, I may get there in the final vote, but right now, I'm not there.
Okay, fair enough. Right, we're on to number eight.
Okay, number eight. Now, we'll shift to bicycle parking. Here's the relevant standards about bike parking. So, to not use the adjustment, the applicant would be required to have a larger span of bicycle parking to accommodate the number of spaces required. I wanted to show you this slide that you were showing at the initial meeting, this is the Darrow-Decker stacking system that the applicant has proposed. The adjustment is to allow this system for bike parking onsite. These are the criteria. To adjust the bicycle parking standard, the planning director had to find consistency with all the criteria to approve the adjustment.
Okay.
I'll let you discuss.
Commissioner Taylor.
So, I have a question for staff, it might already be in there, yeah, but I did not look in detail at the TDM program, but this is in response to the appellant's argument in their open record period, is the Darrow-Decker rack system. So, basically, I think the planning director did a good job of outlining findings, I support and affirm the planning director's decision. I do, there is this kind of challenge, what, what happens if potentially it starts to malfunction and then you render the top layer not workable potentially? So, I was just wondering, in TDM programs, just because it's already a program established to have an annual review, there's an annual tallying process of however they've set up their TDM, but there's this check. So, just to kind of address the appellant's argument or a part of their argument, is there a way to add that to the TDM? And I'm not sure it's kind of maybe outside of our realm and that it's something that should be brought up in the other appeals.
Yeah, I do think it's probably outside of the realm of the TDM because that TDM is specific for a different adjustment, not related to bicycle parking. I will say, if, you know, we were to learn that a project was no longer in compliance with what it was required to do, that's when enforcement typically gets involved, so they pull out all their landscaping or they, you know, put paving where there used to be landscaping and it's noticed, then that is definitely a time when our code compliance folks get involved.
Great, thank you.
Commissioner Baker.
Well, just following up, that sounds like a reasonable consideration. Is there any way to put a modification that the, the property owner send notification annually to the public works that the rack system is functioning properly? In other words, separating it from the TDM?
I don't know that I would see that within the scope of this. I certainly think that that is probably a manufacturing issue with the manufacturer, I don't know.
And again, you'd have to tie it to the adjustment review criteria in order to condition something.
All right. Any other discussion?
You could, you could tie it to B.
B, yeah.
Remains convenient. If it's, if it's broken, it's not convenient, if, if that was the findings of the commission.
I'll just say that I feel like if it was broken, that's a different, a separate issue. I don't know that that's one for the planning commission to, they invest in something at the manufacturer. Yes.
Just in general, Eugene does not have a, not even a reputation, doesn't have a stellar, doesn't have a reputation on enforcement of, in general, it's not well-known for enforcing things when they go out of compliance. It's just, that's the way it is. I mean, you can look all over town to see that. So, I mean, all we're trying to do is, if this is an issue, that's worth considering that we try to deal with it now when we can make a modification to the planning director's decision. We'd still approve the adjustment, but we just would require an annual notification.
I would say to, to think about doing that, planning commission would need to be able to articulate very specific findings as to how, without that reporting requirement, the requested adjustment does not meet this criterion, and with it, it would. And, you know, as has already been discussed, I think there are other mechanisms for ensuring that, whether it's code enforcement and/or, you know, whether it's, as Commissioner Edwards pointed out, it might be a contractual issue. I mean, there may be warranties associated with this. There's a lot of things that are really outside the scope of the land use decision that may go into whether or not this particular bicycle parking continues to function, and I, I think, I guess I would say the main point is, as we've discussed, in order to impose a condition, you would have to find that without the condition, the criterion is not met, and it would be met with the condition, and then articulate how that is true. And I'm, I personally am having trouble thinking of how that would work in this situation.
Commissioner Taylor.
Yeah, I was going to say, I don't, I don't think, you know, in some ways, I shouldn't have even brought it up, is, I can't find any defensible findings personally, so, yeah, I don't think it's applicable for this time, and as Alyssa outlined, there are other code paths or other paths to address it.
Commissioner Baker.
Yeah, I, I mean, I'm, I'm okay with that, it just, it seems to me that, if you look at this site, there aren't additional space, there is an additional space for bicycle parking. There is no outside landscape area, we're gonna, we're gonna take out the, the plannings on the, on the west side, I mean, where is the additional out, space that you could dedicate to, to bicycle parking? You're gonna take away car, car spaces, I mean?
For what purpose?
For bicycle parking, if half of the bicycle parking was no longer functioning. I mean, I'm fine, we can go, go on to the next one.
Okay, let's go ahead and call for a straw poll on adjustment request number eight. Those who support affirming the planning director's decision that the applicant met the approval criteria for bicycle parking standards, space standards. Number nine.
Okay, here's the landscaping adjustments. The next two are very similar and deal closely with the same area. The next two are very similar and deal closely with the same area. Issue number nine, here's the relevant standards, and this deals with the L3 landscaping, as they call it, which is required between a parking structure and residential zone, residentially zoned property. Section number two up here on the slide is the key to the adjustment. It's one canopy tree per 30 linear feet as measured along the interior lot lines is required without the adjustment. In this slide, they're showing where the proposed landscaping should, would be. The lot line in this area is just under 90 feet in length, so basically two to three canopy trees would be required without the adjustment. The applicant requested an adjustment to this standard and instead of canopy trees, to install understory trees, as they call them. Have a summary of the city's definitions up there. The canopy tree, they grow to at least 50 feet and the understory tree is not a canopy Here's the adjustment criteria. The Planning Director had to find consistency with section D of the criteria to approve this adjustment. I'll let you discuss.
Any comments? Commissioner Baker?
Again, because this abuts residential property that may or may not be changed over time, probably, I think it's reasonable to require the, the canopy trees. In other words, it's not clear that if there were canopy trees planted there that there may not, there may be some small open space on that side of the building, the adjacent property, and that's what that, the purpose of that landscape standard was for, was to provide better separation.
I just want to point out that the purpose of this particular landscaping is to block the structured parking, which is, correct me if I'm wrong, Dan, is only at the ground floor level in this particular area?
That's correct.
Commissioner Brofsky and then Commissioner Fragala.
Yeah, that, that was gonna be my question is, is to apply D, it says, provide a physical and visible separation between uses or developments. So that is, we're only talking at ground floor level, correct?
And the reason this particular one applies is because of the structured parking, correct?
So the canopy tree is, is gonna probably have less visual screening at ground floor than what is being proposed, so I'm okay with this.
Commissioner Fragala? I answered my question. Okay. All right, any other? Let's go ahead and straw poll. Those who would affirm the Planning Director's decision that the applicant met the approval criteria for high screen landscape standards. Those opposed?
And I want to comment that canopy tree, you can see it in terms of street trees all around town, it has vegetation starting at five or six feet up and then it goes all the way up. It's not like it's just a thing at the very top, but it, it provides more landscape separation. Thanks.
All right. Mast landscapes.
So this is gonna look familiar, since we just discussed something very similar to this. This one is for the L7 type of landscaping. Here are the criteria. The standard deals with landscaping required between large commercial structures and residentially zoned properties. So again, the canopy trees are the adjustment issue. The applicant wanted to adjust the canopy trees due to health concerns and use understory The canopy tree definition is up there again for you. As before, the standard would require probably two canopy trees per 100 feet of lot line, so I, I think I've said we were like at just under 90 here, so we'd have to have at least one here, if not two. So the applicant has proposed five understory trees there instead of these canopy trees. This is the L7 adjustment, and I'll let you discuss.
Any comments?
Question?
Sure.
So what are the dimensions of a can, an understory tree?
It, the definition doesn't give us that. It just says it's under the 50, it grows to maturity.
I believe there are in the plant materials list. That's in, in order. There is a, an adopted plant materials list, which we don't have with us, but it typically would have the different species of trees that would be acceptable here.
Okay. Any other comments, questions? Great.
I just wanted to clear, sorry, just because it is, just a record, the description here actually says tax lot 2200, it should be 2500.
I found that later on too, I'm sorry.
Right, no worries.
It should be 2500.
Of the public.
Yep.
It's right before the Planning Director's decision where it describes what the actual adjustment is.
How many tax lots?
Yeah, I know, I know, I know. Don't worry. At first I was like, wait a minute.
All right. All right, let's straw poll the, those who affirm the Planning Director's decision that the applicant met their approval criteria for the mast landscape structure. Okay, two.
Just to clarify, are we substituting five understory for two?
There was two to three with the other adjustment that were gonna be required and then one to two with this one, so it could be anywhere from three to five trees that are needed. So yeah, those trees would be, those five trees on that side.
Okay, so...
Understory trees.
So normally, the code requirement would be five understory trees and two canopy trees, is that correct?
No, in this section...
Yes, actually, it would be. It would be, it would be under this, for the mast landscape standard, they would require five understory and two canopy, and they're proposing just to provide the canopy, the understory.
Did you want to finish the vote?
Oh, I apologize. Those opposed? Commissioner Baker? Okay. Thank you.
Okay, issue number 11. This one deals with the parking. At the meeting on August 27th, the applicant requested to drop the adjustment by stating they now plan on meeting the minimum required parking. As the applicant does have an approval for an adjustment from the Planning Director, staff suggests that Planning Commission possibly modify the Planning Director's decision to remove the adjustment. You'd have to make that motion as modified. I'll let you discuss and, and if Lauren has anything to say.
Yeah, so this appeal issue is a little bit funky. So the applicant initially applied for an adjustment to the parking standards. The Planning Director found that the adjustment criteria were met and granted the adjustment. And now the applicant has said, actually, never mind, we don't, we don't want the adjustment anymore. We can comply with minimum code requirements, we'll just do that. If the Planning Director had not yet made a decision on the application, the applicant could have just withdrawn the application and everything would have kind of just gone away. But because there is an approved adjustment sitting out there, the Planning Director has approved the adjustment, the applicant technically has it now, even though they're saying they don't want it and don't plan to use it, they could theoretically, because they kind of have it in their back pocket. We are suggesting, but that they're saying they don't want it and they won't use it, we are suggesting that the Planning Commission modify the Planning Director's decision, reversing it in this particular instance, not because the Planning Director got it wrong, but because the applicant is saying they don't want it anymore, and that will effectively erase it, take it out of the applicant's pocket, and they would not, no longer be able to use it. So it's a, kind of a weird procedural posture. This was the best that we could come up with.
It wouldn't be denying it, though.
Correct. It's not, no, it's not a denial. I mean, so what, you're not saying the Planning Director got it wrong, you're not saying that the applicant couldn't meet the criteria. What you're saying is, look, the applicant's saying they don't want it anymore, so we are kind of pulling it out of the decision.
Commissioner Brofsky and then Commissioner Taylor?
So I heard that when I watched the tape of the appeal, but I didn't see it in the record. Where is that, where is that document that says they no longer want it?
They included that in the, at the meeting. They handed us a packet, so it is in the August 27th meeting. It's also in their, the final, the October 8th. He has a letter from the owner of the building saying they intend to meet the parking, and I think they sprinkled it in some of their other...
There is specifically an, an August 27th letter from the Collegiate Development Group that says that they're securing it or, or otherwise having the stacked parking. So that was really the first written.
Okay.
Right. That is, that is specified in the draft order on page 23, just for clarification. Commissioner Taylor, you had a...
No, I, I think it's fine.
Commissioner Fragala?
So they mentioned at that, that last hearing that they were going to look for parking elsewhere, and I know we're not deciding on that or, I'm not asking for that information, but I'm wondering, is it at the building permit process if they are not able to obtain that, that then that decision will be made?
Correct. So part, the, we will be looking at their motor vehicle parking standards at the time of building permit. They will need to show that they comply with those standards, either onsite or through the, an agreement, an offsite agreement.
I have a clarifying question. So if, if we proceed and approve the, the order the way it's written and that just basically says that we chose not to make a decision, what would happen in the event that, let's say, the applicant changed their mind and they, you know, needed to go back, they would have to apply for a new adjustment review?
They would, they absolutely would.
Okay. Commissioner Baker?
Yeah, and I just had a clerical question on that. So by removing this, we're not saying that we agreed with the Planning Director's decision?
Right. You're not saying either way.
Okay.
Not saying you agreed or that you disagreed, just that it was, it's essentially been withdrawn.
To continue what you were saying is, that's what I was looking for in the record, just making sure they're definitely saying you don't want the option, because when they withdraw, they would have to go through an adjustment review again.
Right.
It's clear.
All right. Any other discussion? So I...
I should have read more, because I did a lot of studying on this one, and I was like, oh, okay. Well, no, I mean...
You're ready.
Oh, well.
It was interesting.
Yeah.
But I stopped after.
Yeah.
So the recommendation that we have, obviously, is that we, the Planning Commission determination is that the applicant no longer is requesting the adjustment, so we would modify the Planning Director's decision to reverse the Planning Director's approval to the adjustment. I mean, it's specified here. So I'm gonna go ahead and call for a straw poll vote on that action, which would be actually a modification.
Reverse the correct term. I mean, I haven't read through the finding all the way through, but I want to be sure, whatever word we put in there, I want to be sure it's the right. Remove, rescind?
Right.
I don't know what that right word is.
You know, obviously, we could affirm the original, I mean, even though they're not asking for that, that would be a choice. You could either affirm, modify, or reverse. Technically, a reverse is usually a denial, so this one is, I would, we put more in the modification camp?
It's, yeah, so we will, I, I will commit to you, that staff will take a look again at the language before we come back to you to adopt the final order, make sure that we're comfortable with the way that it's being phrased. But in my mind, it's a, it's kind of both. It's usually a reversal is a denial. We're not, if you adopted the draft order as written, you would not be denying in that you would be saying that they can't meet the adjustment approval criteria, but you would be reversing the Planning Director's decision, which approved and gave them the adjustment review. So it's really a modification slash reversal. But what, I, again, will look through the draft decision if I have any suggested changes from what is before you today, I will certainly highlight those for you at the next meeting. But the way that we intended to draft it was to provide some good explanation about what happened, what the applicant requested, why the Planning Commission was taking the action that it's taking. So if it ever became a question about, you know, was, should it have been modified, should it have been reversed, it will be clear to a reviewing body what you were trying to do.
Okay.
As clear as we can make. I see that eyebrow, Commissioner Ryan.
Well, we, we will have the, obviously, the opportunity to review a final order and vote on that. So for, for now, I would just go ahead and take a straw poll on those who would support modifying, let's see, modifying the Planning Director's decision to reverse the Planning Director's approval of the adjustment review. All right? Those in favor? All right, those opposed?
Okay.
And as always, you know, if Planning Commissioners have concerns about specific language, please let us know, ideally as soon as possible, so we can work with you on that.
All right.
Okay.
Last one here.
Okay, you ready for number 12?
Yes.
This adjustment is for the vision clearance area. This is the relevant criteria. It creates a vision triangle at intersections, mostly for safety standards.
That's, that's adjustment 13, I thought we were gonna do 12.
Oh, 12 didn't get appealed, so this is appeal issue number 12.
Appeal issue number 12.
Yeah, I'm sorry.
Adjustment issue number 13. They did not appeal adjustment number 12.
You guys kind of tell us this stuff so we don't go through and dig into all this.
I thought it was clear, but sorry.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, but that's number 12, and we're, and we're 19 hours in.
Right, so the structured parking landscaping was not appealed?
Correct.
Yes.
Okay. So here's a slide I showed you from the meeting. The red line is the required area for the triangle, and as you can see, the applicant has proposed a column within that vision triangle. I'll give you this line here, this is the adjustment criteria on the screen. To adjust this, the Planning Director had to find consistency with any of the three criteria to approve the adjustment. I'll let you guys discuss.
Questions, discussion? I'll give you a second to read.
Could staff just clarify the traffic pattern would be south on Hilliard, is that correct?
So Hilliard is north.
North, I mean, sorry, north on Hilliard, so the issue would be someone...
Turning right.
Turning right, or I assume that there's a light there where cars...
There is a light, yeah.
Cars could turn left.
Not in that particular lane, there's multiple lanes there. I don't know if we have it. Yeah, you can go straight or you can go right, and then over on the, there's a couple lanes over where you can go left, so you can't go left if you're immediately adjacent to this property.
Right. No, I'm talking about on Broadway, it would be Broadway turning left onto, well, no.
Oh, you can't turn.
You can't, you can't, so it's...
Well, no, actually, there is a, there's a...
Is there a turning market there?
A signalized turning, left turn lane there.
Well, you can't.
To go towards...
No, it's the other way around.
Hilliard is one way.
So the only...
No, to go, to go north, you can go left off of Broadway onto Hilliard.
Right.
North.
So the only, the only way you could get here would be...
Oh, okay. Heading the other way.
From Broadway, going east or west on Broadway, you could turn into the street.
No.
No, Hilliard goes north.
Okay.
You can't turn south onto Hilliard.
Okay, so, yeah. Okay, there. So the only way you can just go is this way, all right?
Yes.
That's what I was trying to...
And there are, there are traffic lights and crosswalk signals in those locations.
So...
Go ahead, show me.
The issue is whether pedestrians are at risk here, I believe. There is no... There is no limiting auto traffic. And if you look at the relationship of the crosswalk to the curb, I suppose it would be possible to stand behind the column and not be seen by a car, but that would be a very unusual circumstance. So given that, it appears that the people at risk at this turn are pedestrians, and they are going to be within sight of a car, and it's also signaling. So that, that helps the safety. So I'm okay with this one.
Any other comments? All right, let's go ahead and straw poll those that will be comfortable with affirming the planning director's decision that the applicant met the approval criteria for vision clearance standards. All those in favor? And I don't see any opposed. Okay. All right.
Completes it. That's the 12. If you have more discussion?
Yeah.
I just wanted to find out, is there a way we can make a motion today? We have 10 minutes.
Yeah.
So we can.
So I would say if Planning Commission is comfortable and doesn't have changes to the draft final order, you could certainly adopt it today if there are, if there's any reason that you would be asking for significant changes that we would need to go and make and we would probably need to bring back to you in another meeting. But if you're happy with it the way it is, you could certainly go for it.
The only, I saw, you know, I noted what I saw in some of those items, and we just need to clarify the language, which, Lauren, you said you were going to in terms of the motor vehicle 50% reduction, like, is it a reverse slash modify? You were just going to verify that language?
Well, yeah, so I, I have to, when we were talking about it, I was looking at the staff or the planning director's decision, and was like, I don't see the language that I know is in here. Now I have actually turned to the draft final order. And the language that's in it, so it, it says, under Planning Commission determination for the parking adjustment, which that.
Page 24.
On page 24, which the applicant is no longer requesting. Because the applicant is no longer requesting this adjustment, the Planning Commission modifies the planning director's decision to reverse the planning director's approval of the adjustment review related to motor vehicle parking. The applicant no longer has an approved adjustment to the applicable motor vehicle parking requirements. Therefore, at the time of building permits supplemental, the applicant's proposed design will be required to comply with applicable motor vehicle parking standards. Regarding the contention of opponents, the applicant must demonstrate how and where the parking is being met as part of this adjustment. The Planning Commission finds that because motor vehicle parking is no longer part of the applicant's adjustment review request, the appropriate time for determination of compliance with motor vehicle parking requirements is at the time of building permit, not as part of this appeal of applicant's adjustment review application. So that was staff's attempt to be as clear as possible about what it is that applicant requested and what it is that Planning Commission is doing by adopting this draft final order. If you are comfortable with that language, you could certainly adopt it today. If you want to make changes to that language, we'll probably need to go away and bring it back to you at a second meeting.
Anybody have comments on how they might improve upon that paragraph? Do you have it? No?
I think it clearly states that they're going to have to do it during the time of building permit, which is, I think, what a lot of people were looking for. I think it's clear.
Okay. Then, so then the only other thing was, we had a, basically a typo, correct?
There's two references of tax lot 2,200, and those two references need to be 2,500. And it's under the same paragraph. There's just two references.
What page is that?
Page 21. The paragraph right above planning director's decision.
Okay.
And there's two references of 2,200.
Okay.
So. Okay, so with that modification, I guess the other thing before we move to approve the draft final order, I do want to draw Planning Commission's attention to, so Dan has walked us through the appeal issues raised by appellants, but because of the nature of this adjustment review application, unlike most of the appeals that you see, other folks could also raise new issues. And so staff at the end of this draft final order have identified issues raised by folks other than the appellants, and pointed out that, you know, none of them are relevant to the adjustment review criteria, but that Planning Commission has reviewed them and determined that they are not relevant to the adjustment review criteria. So I just wanted to draw your attention to that as well.
So do we want to do a straw poll?
Yeah, we could do that. So if you'll, if you have your AIS, you can look at the, page 26 of the draft order. We have a list of other issues that were raised that weren't really within the scope. Those are shared parking, geotechnical issues, applicability of multifamily standards, open space requirements, traffic and TIA issues, rooftop amenities and safety, street width, frontage improvements, needed housing, clear and objective criteria, and business registration. Again, those items that were entered into the record and were brought up were not within our scope, and so I just, if you all want to maybe straw poll on whether or not there's any, I mean, I don't know that we would take them out, or is that?
Well, I point them out just to make sure that, you know, Planning Commission knows what you're approving, but also because the paragraph under the heading applicability of multifamily standards on page 26 is what I believe Commissioner Borowski was referring to earlier in terms of, you know, should the multifamily standards only apply to the R4 zone section of the property, or should they apply more broadly across the property? And so that paragraph is staff's proposed finding for Planning Commission about why multifamily standards do not apply to the portions of the property zoned C2. But that was a topic of conversation, and so I wanted to make sure that Planning Commission agrees with those findings if you're going to be adopting this order.
Comments, questions?
So basically, what, if we agreed to other issues raised, basically, we're saying we're taking staff's opinion on those and moving them forward.
Well, what you're saying is.
We looked at them, and we agree with staff's position.
Yeah, I mean, I think yes, ultimately, but what you're saying is what Alyssa articulated earlier, which is that the real question that's being raised is, you know, is there a residential use on the ground floor of this? Or is it really, is there a commercial use, I guess, on the ground floor of this proposed development? And that is something that will be looked at at building permit, and if at building permit, it's determined that there is a commercial use on the ground floor based on the design that's submitted then, then there are different standards that will need to be complied with versus if it's all residential use on the ground floor. But it will, it will be looked at, it just isn't looked at in the context of this adjustment review.
Okay. Yeah, I mean, I.
Is that right?
Yeah. And the only thing that would give me pause on that was, was city attorney's staff, or the city's attorney's comment that said she didn't look at the record in regards to the question that I asked.
Well.
And so.
If I may, if I may clarify, so I, I think I misunderstood your question. I have looked at, at the issue that's outlined.
Right.
In the other issues raised under applicability of multifamily standards, and I agree with what is the proposed language of the decision.
When you said that, that gave me pause. It said, I didn't look at that.
I appreciate that you care about my opinion.
So it's, yeah.
I think with, you know, per the usual, what we see, I mean, there's a lot of issues that become, that get raised during these processes that are oftentimes without, you know, outside of the scope of what this, this body is intended to be looking at, and I think that addressing that those items did come up and that they were, you know, I mean, they're being called out as things that came up, and I'm not saying they're not things without merit, but they just don't have any relevance in the adjustment review. I think that that's, I personally think it's helpful to call out these other issues that were raised. But, I mean, as I went through some of those things, I, some of them are very much way outside of the scope, but I did definitely acknowledge that there's, people have concerns, so. All right, so do we, so we don't have a final draft because we have.
Well, we can, so.
As amended.
We can, as amended, we can go ahead and, okay.
So I think you were going to straw poll on the other issues raised, and then, or not, you can decide.
Okay.
If you want to adopt the final order, you could move to adopt it as amended with the two changes to tax lot 2,200, and then we would pull off the draft watermark and give it to the chair to sign.
Okay. Perfect. So let's straw poll on these other issues raised, those who can support including those in the final draft order. All in favor? Okay, that is unanimous. So then I guess I would be. Commissioner Taylor?
I move to, move forward with the draft final order, making the two changes from tax lot 2,200 to 2,500, and that was page 21, the top paragraph.
All right. Do we have a second?
Second.
All right, discussion. Commissioner Borowski?
And this is, this just goes to procedure for some of our newer, newer members. In the past, on complicated appeal issues, not, not so much of this nature, but ones that have several different appeals, the final order rolls them all into one. And if, for myself, in the past, there have been ones where I was adamantly opposed to one of the, of the appeal issues, and that forced me to, to vote against the order. It didn't really happen with me too much, but it has happened at this commission before, where, where the commission voted four to one, or five, you know, six, six to one on a lot of things, and there was one, one item that one, one particular commissioner couldn't get to, but that forced them to vote no on all of them. So that is an option. If you're really strong on one and feel, you know, I can't move forward, yet the rest of the commission, you know, there was a majority of the rest of the commission, don't feel like, you know, it, oh, I'm good on the majority of these, and I'm going to move forward with it. So just, and that's just some context for the commission going forward, you know. I don't think it will affect us too much on this one, but in the past, that has. I've had to vote no on, on a very complex appeal that I agreed with 90% of it, but there was one of them that I couldn't, couldn't do it, and I ended up having to vote no. So just wanted to give that concept to some of our newer commissioners.
Yeah, appreciate that. All right, any other discussion? Okay, all those in favor? And opposed? Commissioner Baker?
And it might be noted that the reason I'm doing this is just the comments that Commissioner Borowski made. There's a few of these that I don't agree with, but I cannot vote separately, so.
All right. Well, thank you, everybody, and with that, thank you, I will go ahead and.
Before you do, what about, do we cancel the meeting for tomorrow, which was deliberation?
Yeah, I was going to bring that up. So we do not need the meeting that was scheduled for the 22nd, nor do we need the meeting that was held for the 29th. So next, yeah.
Okay.
So wow, that you made it through in one meeting. We actually had three set aside for you, so way to go.
Fun.
Good job.
All right, with that, I will go ahead and adjourn. Thank you.